Good evening. I'd like to call to order this the first of the 2017-2018 budget workshop meetings. Please rise for a moment of silence. I have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Okay. Fishbein?
Here.
Laughin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Chertel?
Here.
Sullivan? Testa?
Here.
Xandri? Chairman Savoni?
Here. While I did indicate at the prior meeting this evening Counselor Xandri is on vacation with his family and Counselor Sullivan has another personal commitment. Onto item three, the first of the departments is the Law Department. Attorney Small, do you have any introductory remarks for us or would you like to dispense quickly to the questioning?
I will dispense.
Questions for the Law Department? Technical issue you need to...
Sorry.
Speaking of the mic, and tell us again that you'll dispense.
I will dispense.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Janice, on the insurance claims line?
Yes.
What is that for?
That would be anything that is not covered by insurance. Over the years, it used to be a much larger sum of money and over the years it's been cut back. I mean, it's something that we would not necessarily know. I mean, it's not, like, I can tell you that we would use it for sure, but...
Can you remember the last time we did use it?
I don't think it was that long ago, but I can't...
Is she not?
I can look it up for you and tell you when the last time we did something like that.
Because I know usually when we discuss this stuff, you know, when a question comes up that we have to throw some money in for, you know, something, the representation made is going to come from contingency. So how does this differ from contingency?
Well, I guess, you know, you could argue that it's not. I mean, I think that, I think our position is we wouldn't want it to be eliminated entirely. I don't know. I think, I guess you could argue it's that. I mean, I think that the, it's viewed as that if it's, if it's something that's not covered by insurance, it's not likely to be a large claim. I can't, I can't think of when the last time we did it, though, but I can find out and give you guys a note telling you what it is. But, you know, I mean, you're correct. I mean, it's not, it's not something, I mean, when we come up with a number, it's not because we have an expectancy of something arising in the next year, but...
Because I'm looking at the history and there's been nothing this year and the whole of last year, it was less than $100. So, I mean...
Well, then, we did something last year.
It was $93, if that...
$93.
Okay.
Yeah, so I...
One factor that can come up is, and I don't know if this was the case, but either not insurance or a case that you really don't want to have the insurance company deal with it. And we can pay it, have the capability of paying without affecting the experience.
I, I mean, I don't know if we've had that scenario, but I think historically, I think at one point in time, the, maybe some mailbox claims were paid out of that, going back quite farther, but we don't do that. That comes out of Public Works' budget, so...
Because even, even under your contingency or your scenario, that would, that would be paid out of contingency?
No, if they, if they have a line for it, we'd pay it out of that. It's recognizing there can be claims of a nature that, if we're to settle them, we have the latitude of choosing which way to go. There are times that you might not want to use the insurance policy and it just gives flexibility with the department in analyzing and dealing with what could be presented in the nature of a claim or...
No, all, all I'm saying is you have a $5,000, the general government's going to pay $5,000 as opposed to insurance carrier. Where does the $5,000 come from? It can come from contingency or it can come from this account. So my, my question is, why do we have both?
Because this allows this department to have that money in hand without having to worry about whether there's contingency. We may be worried about the contingency because of winter or any number of factors. So it's just, to me, it's responsible budgeting. A law department should have the capability of dealing with minor claims if they feel that's appropriate and, and not go searching for money somewhere else. I mean, to me, it's recognizing this is an exposure and it's not a huge amount, but it does recognize that that's a legitimate part of what the law department is assigned to do.
Okay. Moving on, the Labor Relations Attorney, that's Attorney Ciccarelli.
Yes.
Do we pay him hourly or is that a contract?
It's a contract.
Okay.
I am monthly.
So it's, it's, it's just for him 85 grand for the entire year?
Right.
And he does just general government side? Because the Board of Ed has their own?
Right.
Well, just to be clear, general government includes all classified service, which includes custodians, nurses, clerical. I think the only ones we don't cover would be parents, possibly, and definitely teachers and the administration.
Well, but we do let, I thought, I thought the board's attorney does do some of that work.
With what?
Doesn't the board's attorney do some of that work?
Well, the board's attorney is also involved in, in some of that work, but, you know, it is classified service. Yeah, you're correct, mainly. Their board attorney, but our personnel department is directly involved in it too, so, I mean, he, he can get involved.
And he's involved in all of our negotiations?
Yes, including pensions and, yeah.
Okay.
And he does, that includes arbitration, so we don't pay extra for the arbitrations.
We only pay for the arbitrator when we decide...
Right, but in terms of the legal fees, we don't, you know, so if you have several arbitrations going, it's, it's all included.
Okay. And then the purchase service lawyers, the $45,000, what is that for?
It's primarily workers' comp. It can also be, there's also this year, $10,000 of that is specifically going to be for the Personnel Department for hiring expertise in pension questions. The Personnel Department's involved in various negotiations and I think in arbitration over pension negotiations. And so we have the Labor Attorney doing that, but in terms of what a, the legal question specifically about a pension plan, those services, that sum is for those services.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the Law Department? There being none, I kindly dismiss you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next department on the agenda is the Mayor's Office. Mayor?
Yes?
Do you have any introductory remarks or would you like to simply dispense to the questioning?
I never want to dispense with any questioning, but there's no big change with regard to the budget, as you can see. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Certainly. Questions for the Mayor. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, the purchase services negotiations line of $30,000, what's that for?
That's for negotiations that will be dealing with pension contracts as well as, I believe, the managers. So I believe that would be paying for the arbitration mediation expenses.
Any specialists?
Any specialists we'd hire, et cetera.
So how is that, so those are experts that are not lawyers?
Correct, for the most part. Could be, lately it's been actuarial folks or health insurance folks.
Okay. And then the dues and fees, the $29,000, what is that?
I could, I'm just going to spin a yarn for a second, but I don't think so. $28,250-some dollars of that is a CCM membership and the remainder is dues and fees if I attend a seminar or things of that kind. But $28,251 is our, is our membership in Connecticut Conference of Municipalities.
So it's your continued desire, even though CCM has suggested that municipalities be able to impose sales taxes, and it appears that they're favoring cities over towns, that we continue to be part of CCM?
Yeah, I, I, I won't sit here and say that I agree with all of the legislative directions at CCM, which is a board represents all of the communities. And I, I think they, they tend to certainly speak loudly in terms of their big dues payers, which would be the cities. But there are, there are items of value that I think we receive, a number of information gathering capabilities. And I'm hopeful that with Don Rowe's office not being filled, they do provide insight into some grants and other capabilities that departments use. We also are continuing to see amounts of savings people get from the discount cards and I believe that has dropped. Initially, it was a large amount of money. In 2015, it was $30,000. 2014, it was price savings of $56,000. In '16, it was $22,551. This is money that was saved by residents who used the cards. It may be time to be talking to them about sending out the cards again. It could be people have lost them, they lose sight of them, et cetera. But that, that was a big reason for our initially joining and the amount of savings is sizable, even at the $22,000 level.
Well, how, do you know how that's computed? I mean, because...
Well, we just, we, we receive a report from, from CCM showing a monthly number of claims, the local cards used, number of cards used, and then price saving, let's see, member cost, average member prescription cost, price savings, average price of savings, et cetera. So, I mean, they, they are very active in providing an ongoing report. I have no reason to doubt it.
Well, I, I can just, I have a card for a particular prescription that when I don't use the card, it's $1,500 for the prescription. With the card, it's free.
So that's a good savings.
It is a good savings. I don't know how they're computing this, but, you know, one of the things that wasn't disclosed to us when, when we bought that program and got into that is that they, CCM, make money every time somebody goes and uses the card, which we never factored in to our situation. So I just, I remain opposed.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that. I, I mean, this shows $22,000 savings and we're spending[905.84][907.12]$28,000. So there's a real benefit to residents, as I see it. Whether CCM is making money, they may or may not, and certainly we should know if they are, but given the other services they offer and that kind of savings, it would appear to me to be beneficial at this point.
So are we taking advantage of the online services that CCM offers or is it just the prescription situation?
Well, in terms of the services they offer, I would imagine departments have accessed those.
So we don't know if...
I do know personnel utilizes their database for labor agreements that have been reached, either through arbitration or through agreement. I do know that, that occurs. I believe, I believe that's quarterly. I utilize it for the, CCM analyzes things that come from the governor's office, I guess is...
Well, I'm very aware, yeah.
Yeah, so as far as grant numbers go. And as you know, as we all know, when the governor comes out with this number, it's not only this governor, but past governors, it's, it's just a big, huge lump sum of money, education cost sharing. Here it is. And then CCM works on making those calculations for their member towns and then doing some verification with the state to see if it's very close or as it can be, and then communicates to us. I utilize that service as well. That's technologically driven.
So isn't that stuff available through cost?
I believe it is. I don't know what the delay is from cost. I, I know they also provide other services that the mayor can speak to, but I know usually the CCM analysis, the breakdown by the communities, usually comes out, usually the next day, the next business day.
So we're, we're a member of cost? I'm just trying to, it appears that they have the same information.
We don't, we're not a member of cost.
Oh, we aren't?
No.
Were we at one point?
No.
Is there a reason why not?
I, I can't speak to what level of services they offer. They're, they generally are the, they represent the small towns, obviously, a conference of small towns. I think we probably could be a member. I don't know what their membership requirements are, if it's a population or not. Some towns, some communities, municipalities are members of both. I can't see you being a member of both, frankly.
No, I just...
But you pay dues to them as well, as far as...
Oh, agreed. I just, for what we are in the, we're not a Bridgeport, we're not New London, we're not a Hartford, and those are CCM, the way I see it. We're more cost and that's why, I thought we were members of both, quite frankly.
Except that in terms of population, we're number 23 in the state. Out of 169, we're number 23. We're not a small town, not at 45,000-plus people. So, you know, we, we, it's good. We think of ourselves as a small town, but we really aren't.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Any other questions for the Mayor's Office? There being none, we'll move on to the Town Council Budget. I have no introductory remarks. Are there any questions? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the staffing, I don't know who I'm going to here. The staffing that was actual, January 31, 2017, for this year, the seven months, shows nine, but we're showing 10 for next year. Why is that?
Isn't, isn't that what we pay to your department towards the, the clerk in your department who supports us?
No, I think that's what we're paying Cynthia Kleiss for the Charter of Vision Secretary.
Oh, is that under our budget?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, that could be, because it shows about $1,000.
That's correct, $1,000 bucks.
So, but then we're showing, I thought charter was, do we anticipate charter being in action after July 1?
So, is that right, Chairman?
Please.
So I think what we anticipated is we, you know, I've not been through the charter process as, as a clerk, so I think the Chairman and I, we were not sure what the process will be to get the charter ready, if it's to go on the ballot and if it has to go in the newspaper. So we wanted to have that money there in case we need Cynthia, the secretary, recording secretary, to, to produce the document for us. And so it's really, it's just there as a, as a safety net, because as we know, the charter has just wrapped up. But they could still have meetings after they come to you, so it's still kind of up in the air.
But you would anticipate that those meetings would happen within this fiscal year? And I would also anticipate that whatever document has to be created, once that's completed, would be done by the Law Department and not, I would think.
We really weren't sure. And the thing is, you mean, you have until, I think it's September 7th to get the question on the ballot. So I mean, what if all of a sudden they had to meet, excuse me, in, you know, July or something, which is cutting it kind of short. But you're right, probably the Law Department does, but maybe they would look for Cynthia to help. I really don't, you know, we weren't really, we were just being proactive.
Got it. The telephone line, we're appropriating $1,200 for a telephone?
So when we consolidated the office, the counselors wanted to keep their own telephone number. So you have your own phone number for the Town Council office, so people call. It rolls into my, my private line. You probably get about 15 calls a year. It's not a lot. And so in turn, we have to pay the bill. But that was your decision, you, the nine of you decided to keep the line.
I didn't vote on that.
Well, you probably didn't vote for it then, but the others did.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
We can certainly examine whether or not we need to keep our own separate phone line.
Oh, wait, I, I do have one other thing, if that's okay.
Oh, sure.
So the IT committee talked about doing Wi-Fi and I don't see having, and having it in our budget, and I don't see anything here. Is that because...
There is the possibility that we will get it done this year.
Okay.
Use other funds. And therefore, the equipment purchase wouldn't, you don't, you do that, you purchase the equipment once and then we'd have to provide, if there's a connectivity charge, we'd have to provide that.
So it's anticipated that if that was to happen, we'd take that out of contingency?
If it's to happen this year, yes. But it might make sense that if we're paying for the service on an ongoing basis, that perhaps we use the telephone budget for that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions for the Council Budget? Then moving on to the Town Clerk. Cut it, cut it, cut it. Do you have any introductory remarks, Madam Clerk?
No, my budget pretty much stayed the same.
Okay, questions. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the office expenses line, which we appropriated $20,000 last year through seven months, has only expended 30, less than $3,500. What's going on?
That seems really inaccurate, to be honest with you. I mean, when I think about all the things that we've purchased, so that number, I think, if Mr. Boz would correct me, is probably from January. And I have purchased software and other things, so that, I've purchased stools and, yeah, that, that number's a lot higher. I think you got a document tonight that I would hope... I've only spent $4,400?
But you also, this is actual expenditures, you also have some encumbrances.
I do, I do have encumbrances, so things that are coming up, right? That's why the mayor bumped it down to $18,000.
If I may, what would you consider an encumbrance?
Well, what happens with office supplies, many departments put together a blanket purchase order at the beginning of the year, because they spend, let's say, throw a number out there, $5,000. And we have a little bidder, we bid that every three years, we have a little bidder for that, let's just call them generic office supplies. And as they, they work off of that purchase order, you know, throughout the, the entire fiscal year. So the amount that they actually pay is the one that's, that's shown in that column. If towards the end of the year comes those, that $5,000 and let's say they've spent $4,400, $600 of that purchase order will get canceled and then it's, it's the purchase, you know, for that fiscal year is complete, the contract for that department. So...
For instance, I just spent $2,200 advertising the budget in the paper. I just paid a bill for $1,800 for the microfilm of my maps, which is a yearly expense.
Yeah.
I know I have other things that I'm waiting...
So that just turned to over $8,000?
Correct, that will, that all tick up. They, it comes out of office expenses, but as, as Mr. Boz said, it goes into different vendors, POs, and at certain times of the year where we, we, we do that work and then it's paid.
All right, the, the election materials and supplies, I, I don't know. I guess it's, it's of note that it was a very large election, but we didn't spend anywhere near where we thought we were going to?
Yeah, I mean, the mayor, the mayor and I, he, he, the mayor felt the same way, which is why it came down five, excuse me, $5,000. I mean, I, I have to say, I do budget a little higher for, for the election, because you never really know if the, the reader cards are going to go up or the paper product is going to go up or, you really just don't know what's going to come at you. I think you want to always be prepared. I mean, this is just a municipal cycle, there's most likely not any other election but the November election, but it's good to be prepared in case you're going to have some sort of a primary. And I, I, the mayor wanted to bring that line down even a little further, but because we're having the charter, if the charter should go to the ballot, I wasn't really sure if that was a higher expense, if it created a bigger ballot, if it created a second ballot, you know. I didn't have any experience with, with that, so I wanted a little extra money there.
Yeah, that, that was one of the questions about whether there has to be two...
I don't have any idea.
Whether it can fit on the same ballot or whether it's a separate one and, you know, all of its money.
The dues and fees is...
So the dues and fees did go up?
A lot.
It's not a lot, really, to be honest with you.
Almost 70%, but okay.
Well, I mean, I attend two conferences each, each year by statute and the dues and fees went up because I am hiring a new assistant Town Clerk. And the assistant will need to be certified, so that person will need to attend two classes a year for certification, will need to get their notary, which is costly upfront, and I took into account that.
Okay. And then the, the capital expenditures, the work chair and the PCs, what's going on?
So you just, you just approved that tonight on your consent agenda.
That's what I thought. It's the same stuff.
Yeah, I was able to get a better price on the copier, so I actually spent less money.
Okay.
But the mayor, the mayor didn't, he allowed me to get it now with contingency.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that needs are met. Okay.
That was with the condition that you not use it until July.
The, the copier, color scanning?
Yeah.
Okay. And to Adobe?
Let's hope. I don't know with the, with the...
I'll come over and hook it up.
With the, with the not having the internet being able to, I don't know, it's, I needed somebody else to hook it up, I think.
Okay, it's a Saturday project. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the Town Clerk's office? All right, there being none and there being no other business on this agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.